The regular board meeting minutes of March 17th.
The United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the court call a roll, please?
Here. Here. President.
Here.
Here.
Here. Court show that we have a form. Could I have a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of March 17th?
So moved.
Second. A motion by trustee Plouk, the second by trustee Diaz. Call a roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Fritz.
Yes.
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 Motion passes. At this time, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Could state your name?
Hi, my name is Cora Chabala Christov. I live at 4048 Prairie Avenue, Shilla Park. My mom, my daughter will pass out flyers. Not flyers, literature. And then here's copies for all you board members. Excuse me, this is the first time I've talked in public. I don't know about you people.
Could you use the microphone a little bit better?
This is the first time that I've talked in front of people, so... Bear with me. First of all, I'd like to thank the Public Works Director, Acting Director at the time, Joseph Blom, for fixing the stop sign issue along Rose Street by your ARPEC area. Secondly... April 3rd, around midnight, Soaring Avenue and the vacant lot in between the old Hostess Building and the AT&amp;T Building in Shilla Park. Sorry, I don't have pictures. But was just notified about an incident at the location of Soaring Avenue in between the vacant building and the Hostess at AT&amp;T Building. Around midnight on April 3rd, 2016, a semi truck was pulled over and surrounded by multiple squad cars from our very own Shilla Park Police Department. Does anyone have any information or pictures? Spot crime will not report for a couple of weeks. By then, it will be old news. Any answers from Acting Chief Tommy Fergakis or Barbara Pilteimer?
I'm not really with the court, so I don't know.
Okay. I tried to call him this morning, he had eight o'clock, but he wasn't in. So then the other incident that happened across the street from my house at 4048 Prairie, there was a suspicious van, two male subjects, sitting in the vehicle over an hour. Later to find out, it was over two hours. And a 911 was called. Two officers responded and approached the freight van, which was one of those big white vans that carry cargo freight or cargo van, whatever you want to call it. Each officer approached the passenger on the driver's side, and the driver took off, almost injuring the officers. Chase the two male subjects and chase ended it, if I'm correct, at the Rose Street and 25th Avenue. After that, I have no idea what happened. Hopefully, our responding officers were not hurt and they're safe. And we have, we will hear the conclusion of this incident from our Acting Chief Tommy Fergakis or our Mayor Barbara Pilteimer? No response, I know. Sorry. Well, is this going to be... Because in this area, I posted back on March 15th at 7:05 a.m. That the lights are out in this area. The whole street has been out. And the issue is ongoing. I've talked to the mayor. I've talked to a village worker via Facebook and a Public Works Acting Director at the time about this issue. They tell me it's a com-ed issue. I'm not 100% sure. I can't prove it. But a year ago, we did switch electric companies. We went with the third party, if I'm correct. Which I think I am, because a lot of residents in town, you either switched or you didn't. We didn't. My family didn't. So... So... I just want to know how expensive is it going to be to fix the trustee board? And when is this problem going to be fixed? Because it's a quarter of Shilla Park.
I have talked to you about this and...
Right, but it's almost a month later now, and the lights work sometimes. One day, then three days, no, a week later.
And that really has nothing to do with the supplier at all. So, you know, when we... The supplier that the village has, that people signed up for, they didn't, that has nothing to do with the lights. So, that really does nothing to do with it.
So, and I've also addressed the issue of that Rose Street is a very dangerous street. Many years back, there was a car accident where the driver hit that building at the end of that block on Soaring. And he was killed. It was a limo driver, and it was actually a limo. I didn't Google search it because I haven't had time. So, but you guys can all do that. So, why can't there be the construction horses, some kind of awareness showing that there's buildings there? I mean, there's multiple semis there. You know it's a speed zone. Everybody knows it, because when Irving Park Road is backed up, they turn down Prairie Avenue in the morning time. And we don't have the presence of a police officer a majority of the time. And if they are there, they show they're there, and then they stop. So, for income of the village, if they hid and then got these people, so they quit using our street as a speed zone, a racetrack in the alley part, which is Rose Street, it used to be an alley, until ARPEC came in and made it a street. The village made it a street. And then over there where the vacant building is, on Rose Street, in between the vacant building and I think it's called Sun something. I mean, it's fully loaded with jam-packed. I'm sure all you guys have driven down that street. And you don't see something wrong with that? And then we have a developer that's interested in that area, and it looks like a dump. Nothing? And this is an ongoing issue for almost a month. March 15th. And this issue stems from Franklin Park. And it's not like I'm out looking for this stuff. My dad owns the building at 4001 Prairie, across the street from the old closest thrift store. And I was down there actually picking up the inspection, for the building inspection. And I seen our electrical supply company on the corner in the, where it dead ends at that street.
Joe, we're still in contact with them, correct, about this problem? Okay. We are looking into it, Corey. We're doing the best we can to get this right.
So, but is the public safety concern?
We get it.
Would you think that, you guys, it's been a month? The building, it's pitch black. Go drive there when you leave tonight and look down that street. Go walk it. We have people in this area that do not drive. Are residents of Shilla Park not a concern to you guys, the safety?
Corey, there's not... None at all, the situation?
Well, it's a month, Barb, come on.
We have been in contact with them.
Right, it doesn't have nothing to do with the contact anymore. It has to do with the safety. Why can't horses be put up? Why can't something be put up to protect the drivers, the pedestrians, the bike riders? Why not? It's a busy street. Why up? Diaz, is it enough? I do not care about the residents? You live by a school. If it was pitch black, would you do something about it right away? So why is my area of Shilla Park that has always been forgotten about not a priority? Nobody has answers, right? Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Anyone else?
Jennifer, of course, I'm sure most of you know who I am, if not all. I wanted to talk today about the liquor license for Lollipop. I do have these right of you who may not have seen it. I unfortunately missed the earlier meeting, although I understand that there was some claim that this is not them, but if you follow the trail, it is them. Two things that came to my attention on that particular picture. The first thing, of course, is the fact that there's a young lady with a good portion of her cleavage out licking a lollipop. The second, of course, being in the upper left-hand corner where it says, "Now hiring bartender servers and dancers." What exactly does that mean, dancers? Strippers, go-go dancers, girls dancing on pedestals? Is this what we really want in Shilla Park? I don't care if the girls dance in turtlenecks, because in my opinion, today it's turtlenecks, tomorrow skimpy dresses, next bikinis, and before you know it, it'll be pasties. And eventually, potentially, no clothes at all. Once it's here, it'll be near impossible to get rid of. A convent of nuns is fighting club allure in Stone Park, and they are getting nowhere. Nuns. I remember my mother telling me about a dance club called Club Turey that used to be on Manheim Road. Not only would some call it morally corrupt, but it was also a tourist trap for unsuspecting patrons. And she vividly remembers how hard it was to get rid of it and how thrilled they were when that finally happened. And here we are so many years later, in my opinion, considering the same thing. What guarantees do we have that this will not become a strip club? Wally Park said there would be stores, restaurants, et cetera, and up to that point, up to this point, it has not happened. On the opposite side, we have a smoke shop that obviously unbeknownst to all of us, yourselves included, ended up attempting to sell drug paraphernalia. It's not what was expected, but it is what happened. What are we doing as a village to help secure for ourselves the opportunities that we are promised, as well as protecting ourselves from any unfavorable situations? Again, I have to say, is this really what we want for Shilla Park? A questionable club within walking distance of an elementary school? For a family to be having dinner at Richie's and potentially see an advertisement, a flyer, a billboard for a scantily clad woman sucking a lollipop? On a side note, it's a little concerning to me that there is already construction going up at a facility, at that facility. I'm certainly not a businesswoman, but it seems a little premature to be building on something you don't even know that you have a liquor/business license for. Seems like it's always the same. Liquor license, bars, gas stations selling liquor, convenience stores wanting to pour liquor. It's getting to the point that it's a toss-up between liquor license and consulting firms as to which we have more of here in Shilla Park. Now, let's be realistic, folks. I saw the thunder from down under in Vegas, but that's just the point. It was in Vegas, not in Shilla Park, not where I live, not where I raised my daughter, not in the town where my nephew could be playing down the street. My childhood memories of Shilla Park are going to Orange Drugs, where you could get a prescription, pay your electric bill, buy hairspray gifts and candy all in one shot. Ben Franklin, where we could walk to as a group on our way to the pool and for $2.00 get enough candy for the whole group. Personally, on my side of town, it was the convenience store that was on Montrose and River Road that was owned by Dale. And if you lived on our side of town, every child and parent knew who Dale was. And it was like a rite of passage when your parents actually allowed you to walk there by yourself or with your friends. Those are the businesses that built the foundation for me and my friends in this town. And I only ask that you take that into consideration when making a decision about the Lollipop Club. Don't let my daughter's childhood memories of our town be a strip club on Lawrence Avenue. In closing, my only question is, I'd like to know why all of a sudden people think they could come into this town and do this kind of stuff? What has changed?
Thank you. Anything else at this time?
I wasn't going to say anything tonight, because my son told me to watch my blood pressure. But, you know, I can remember saying the same thing this lady said, when they put a bar not too far away from the school. This was the past regime. They put a bar and I complained about it. I said, "Why are we putting bars three blocks away from a local school?" So, I'm doing the same thing you're doing, only I did it with the last regime, okay? Now, I have something else I want to say. Oh, I want them to know I'm not running for trustee. Are you people kidding me? Are you serious? I'm looking to bring Lisa Madigan to do an investigation of this town, people. I don't want to run for this town. I want it to be investigated for the last 10 to 12 years. When I was on the board, I want you to know... Oh, I'm screaming. My son said, "I gotta stop there." Sorry about that. I was on the board when senior housing was coming up. I was against it. Every vote that was taken, I was against it. I didn't have enough information. Especially, I got scared when I went downtown to see where the attorney's at, and it was an empty office. That scared me, okay? Other things that scared me, I didn't know who the principals were. I couldn't find them, okay? All right. Now I find out, six months after I left the board, I find out we're half a million dollars short. $509,000. Nobody could find this half million dollars. Really, people? Really? Okay? I did my own investigation, folks. I did my own investigation. Donna Smithy, she doesn't live at 1434 Northwestern. She was the president of Building Solutions. It's an empty building. Mark Steele, he was a co-partner. He doesn't live on 1220 Telka Road. Who is investigating what happened to a half million dollars? Who's doing this? I have a right to know. I was a board member and I walked away, because I was asking too many questions, okay? I think it's about time Lisa Madigan stepped in here and did an investigation for the last 10 to 12 years. And I want to know why we can't find a half million dollars? Or maybe 2 million more that we paid for Selly's property? What happened to that? It's about time people started answering questions. People that were on the board, oh, because I was too busy asking questions, I was told to shut up. Well, you know what, people? I'm not shutting up now. I demand Lisa Madigan or somebody else come into this town and investigate what happened for the last 10 to 12 years, because my time is getting short. And I don't want people coming up to this microphone now and talking nonsense. Where's the money, people? Where's the money? I got, I know who voted yes on all this. Are people coming into our town to vote that don't live here? People in New Orleans, people in River Grove? And they come to vote? Is this what you people want of this town? This is a wonderful town. And it's not getting any better, because you people want to fight. I almost bought a book for all of you, nasty people. There's a lot of nasty people. I go to church every Sunday and I hear complaints about what's happening. And I'm going to promise them that I will get somebody to investigate what happened for the last 10 to 12 years. We have to know, or else this town is going nowhere. I want this to stop. Okay?
Anyone else at this time? Okay. We are going to change the, a little bit on the agenda here. We're going to move up the appointment of our new police chief. And to a happier time here, so... If we can have, where is our police and fire commission, Glenn? Hannah? We are proud to announce that I am appointing the new police chief, Tom Fergakis. Can I have a motion to approve that?
Second.
Okay. Please call a roll. Plouk and Lima.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Dezaki?
Yes.
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 Okay. Motion passes.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I disally swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, the ordinances and rules of the Village of Shilla Park Police Department, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of chief according to the best of my ability.
And your first assignment is to address Corey Chabala's...
Madam President, members of the board and trustees, we want to thank you for inviting us up tonight to swear in the new chief. We will, of course, because of this, be more frequently coming to your meetings. So, we'll see you again soon.
Thank you, Glenn. Thank you. I'm assuming you have some celebrations to do, right? So, if you need to go and cut some cake and have some drinks off duty, please feel free, okay? I'm sure you have a lot of friends back there, you have a lot of support back there, so thank you guys for coming. Okay, we're going to change again the agenda. We have to go into executive session at this time for some litigation and personnel matters. Okay, I have a motion to, what?
So moved.
Reconvene.
Yeah. Okay. You made a motion to reconvene.
Second.
Call a roll.
Here. President. Here.
Lima?
Here.
President? And President? Here. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the workman's camp settlement agreement?
I make the motion.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Dezaki and a second by trustee Diaz. Call a roll.
Diaz?
Yes.
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Dezaki?
Yes.
And person?
Okay, motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the employee separation agreement?
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Plouk, second by trustee Fritz. Call a roll.
Diaz?
President.
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Dezaki?
No.
Lima?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Okay. We're done with the executive session? That's it? That was it? All right. We're going to continue on with the regular board meeting. Our consent agenda for consideration and action, do I have a motion to approve that?
Oh.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Diaz, second by trustee Lima. Call a roll, please.
Diaz?
Yes.
Plouk?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Dezaki?
Yes.
Lima?
Yes.
Person? Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. All right, we're going to move on to the committee of the hold discussion items. Take the lay bread.
The first item has been a topic of discussion. This board and community development. Later, there is a, let's see here, an action item under the other matters resolution concerning this bridge development, former Hostess site redevelopment. Any questions that come into that? Next one, we have documents related to the Irving Park Road and Old River Road intersection grant project. These are two agreements. These are two agreements, one is with IDOT, one is with our village engineer, and resolutions were previously adopted concerning this project. So these are the follow-up agreements, so we'll continue to proceed forward on that. Any questions, Patrick, or any comments?
There's a lot of paperwork.
A lot of copies of each one of those that have to go to different people after they're signed, if it's approved. Then the next one, Zuline Water Main and the street, this is just to let you know there's a bid letting coming up. When is that going to be, about a week?
Wednesday of next week.
Okay.
So we expect to bring the recommendation for award to the next meeting.
Next meeting, right. Provided that everything's in order from the actual bids, right? And then the next one is a sidewalk water main 2016 program. This is being proposed, that we continue one more year with the current contractor. Do you have any questions on that? Or any further comments? Joe, do you have about that?
Much.
It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, same thing we had last year.
There's even a list that we put in the drop box of where we've identified needed replacements and that type of thing.
Yes, sir.
Okay, if there's nothing else on that. The next one is, we did get some quotes for purchase of a heating unit that has failed, one of the four that's in the public works garage. Questions on that? John, you haven't, John Dealer worked on that with Joe and the others. Any questions on that? Again, that's pretty straightforward. Next one is quotes on outdoor recreation fitness equipment. This has to do with Staleka Park, and I know both John and the recreation board did some field research on this, got some proposals to bring forward for your consideration. Any comments or questions on that? All right. The next one, we are in receipt of a request from a family and friends of, trying to remember his first name, I'm sorry.
Randall.
Randall.
Randall, yes, thank you very much. Randall Shelton, military veteran. So, you know, at this time, really, if there's any verbal request or statement about this that the family or supporters would like to make, this would be a good time to do it.
Family one up, okay.
We would appreciate it, for an opportunity to come forward. Thank you.
All right, how you guys doing?
Good.
Very good.
First board meeting, we're interested. Guys, hear a lot of complaints, but it's all right. I'm Eugene Gore, I live in 9800 Garden Court. I'm a friend of Randy Shelton. Let's see, in this town, we've already named things after other people. We have Anamontana Water Park, Dooley Memorial Park, and Staleka Park. We do these types of things to honor people for the things they have done. Randall Shelton was a member of the US Army who made the ultimate sacrifice in service to our country. If this is not an honorable enough cause to name a field after him, I don't know what is. He was killed along with two other soldiers on September 4th, 2007, from wounds inflicted by an improvised explosive device in Baghdad. The other two people are Joel Murray, who was out of Kansas City, and specialist David J. Wayne, who was out of Emporia, Kansas. Randy was a resident of Shiller Park, he attended all District 81 schools, he played little in that field, I played with him, I was a friend of his. His parents are here, they have been residents of this community too. I think this is something we can do to honor one of our community members, something that shows the courage and sacrifice it takes to be a part of this country, to be a part of this community. I think it's something that as people go forward, they can see the sacrifice that he made to this country. That's it, anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't have any, any questions at all. Proposal's fantastic. I see that it's not, this is the only mention of it on the, on the agenda. Can we get it moved at least to committee so it doesn't get lost in the shuffle?
Sure could, you could.
Because if we move it to committee, make sure that it's going to get addressed sooner or later, where if we forget them, you know, we don't act on it tonight, nor do we put it in committee, it's just here, then we have to.
That was our intention, yeah.
And the committee would be Recreation Committee.
And our committee can make their choice.
Absolutely.
In other ways, sort of.
That was our intention, yeah.
That would be a great way to do it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, that'd be a great way to do it, thank you. Okay, and then the next one, the Crystal Creek flood plain remapping, we do have some updated information on that. I did some research on it, Patrick has done some. You want to offer your comments, Patrick? This is a pretty important matter, and hopefully we're coming near some kind of milestone on this.
Sure, we do, we've been in contact often and for several months now with Chris Burke's office, the engineers that are working for the Village of Shiller Park and the Village of Franklin Park for the flood remap change. It's my understanding that next week, and the latest the week following, we should finally see all the information that's proposed to be submitted to FEMA. And then perhaps even more importantly, I think we'll start setting our sights toward having a public meeting, a town hall meeting sort of thing, at least get some information out to the public. Once, now that all the math mags are done and we're ready to submit, and when they are, I think that'd be a good time to have a meeting for, for the villagers to see what's going on, and let Burke's office kind of explain what the next steps are, and then start, you know, people can start seeing some progress.
That'll be great, yeah, absolutely. Any, any questions about that, where is that? Okay. And then the next one, yeah, oh, yeah, Lawrence and Foster Signal Pedestrian Project, oh, that's one that's actually.
It's Forster.
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 What did I say?
Austin.
I meant Forster. I know it's Forster. It's over there by Washington School, I know that. Go ahead, please.
We're, we're going on that.
You're messing.
I didn't get a chance to drive by there today, but they were supposed to start yesterday. The weather's been a little dodgy, I was here, but as soon as weather allows, that project is all go, and it should be completed sometime, probably mid-May. Just the way it worked out with weather and everything, the timing is going to be such that we finally get it done right in time for school to close, but at least everything will be in place when they come back in the fall.
What are the news tonight?
Is that just for schools, for water parks, is there, in the Canadian shores, you were making it for it?
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good improvement.
Yeah, no benefit here. Yeah.
I mean, even, even the people who live in that multi-family housing there across the street, it's just, it's been a problem.
Absolutely. And then just by the, very briefly, we still await comments from IDOT for a similar project at River and Lawrence. So as soon as we get comments back from IDOT, we'll be able to make say a project is working.
Right, yeah, it's good, good. Okay, the next one is just, that's just a duplicate, number 10 there. And then 11, we've alr, you've already acted on that. I think I covered everything here, so it's really, you can see there the list of items in committees. At 12F, we'll add the one that's been suggested concerning the Randall Shelton request for naming of that ball field. There's also other items here you can see. So if you have any question about any of these items that are on the committees, please let me know, or let the appropriate department know, and we'll help you as we can. One thing I'd like to, do you have anything additional to talk about, Patrick, under your comments?
I have.
Okay. And I'll just mention one thing, I, Brian and I talked with the incoming Public Works Director, Eric Oskerson, just a few days ago, and I'm happy to say that, you know, I was able to tell him about the vote here by the board to bring him on, and he's already well into his move to come here. They, they, they already have their moving company identified and secured, they've got actually schools situation with, he's got five children, from toddler up to elementary grades, getting them all situated, and he's got a rental place that they've identified in Elkhorn Village, just right near, on the side of your court. So happy to say that's all moving along as far as we can tell with Eric and his family.
Brad, there's kind of an addition being added on St. Kennedy School just for his family.
That's good.
Yeah.
Good.
He's the reason.
There you go. Well, he could, he could help fill the seats, that's for sure. And so, so given all of that, I just want to thank in particular Mario Jos, who's not here, but even equally, or even more so, Joe Blum, and also Brian Bersik, because they took on a lot of the administrative interim tasks here. So thank you guys, appreciate it very much, helped us get through this, and hopefully you'll also help Eric when he comes on board to hit the ground running. That's all I have.
Any of the department heads have anything they'd like to add at this time?
I just wanted to mention that since we last had a meeting, the website development has been proceeding along. We have had the training, and I wanted to thank all the department heads for making employees available. Joe was a part of that training for Public Works and as well as representative to Major Park. And we have been working on, you know, some issues as far as getting good pictures on the site, so if you have really high-res pictures you want to share, I'd be very interested in getting any, show parks or events or things that are, and they have to be horizontal perspective, not vertical. We are working on that, but I wanted to just update briefly on that. It's May 12th as of our date from watching the new site, so certainly looking forward to that.
I do, Mayor, we have a representative from Bridge Development here this evening who happens to have a flight out at O'Hare this evening, and Community Development is the last item on the agenda, and if at all possible, if we could start from the bottom up, or at least call his case, that would be perfect.
You referring to Mark Howser again? Hi, Mark. Thank you. It's under a reservation.
Yeah, I mean, they have a motion to take that, if you're one of the people or take that, I'm not worried, certainly.
Yes, and that should be in your drop, drop box.
Or as soon as, sorry, the department heads are done.
Any other department head, tenants, elected officials on this side, anything over here?
Yes, we have one brief question, actually pertains to the Bridge Development. I know there's a big, something seems like a similar project's going on, I think it's Northlake, it's a Northlake Morals Park area, I'm not sure exactly which suburb it is. Have, have we chatted with any of the officials in Northlake to get an idea of what their experience has been like, or how the project's moving along with them? It seems like it'd be incomparable, and it seems like with a lot of these projects, we, we're kind of going off nothing, kind of guessing how it might turn out, and there's one happening seemingly right next door. I'm just curious if we chatted with anybody on Northlake. If it's Northlake, forgive me, if it's not.
I believe it is Northlake, Bob, and the development that's going in there.
That seems substantially larger, I know that.
It's actually a bridge development project as well. So, Mark, maybe could answer any questions that you have? Did myself speak to any of the representatives or employees of Northlake?
Okay, so when you put the levy on, right, it breaks it down by the whole, all of Shiller Park's jurisdiction. So what happens is they just pay a smaller percentage of the pie than everyone else, so that's really pretty much how it works. When you set a levy on, it's per, or EAB's somewhere like a few hundred million dollars, they're just paying a smaller portion than everyone else would be.
It's a burden, yeah.
Correct.
But the burden's equal.
Trying to gauge the impact of the multiple six Bs and how they.
Correct, I'd have to go back and I'd have to talk to some of the people of the county. It might be a process of a week or so to get all that information, so I am working on it. By the next meeting, I'll have that for you.
I know the clerk's office has a list of the six Bs, and I thought Floyd was going to provide you with that, we talked about this two weeks ago.
Yeah, I just want to make sure to run my numbers against the counties to make sure that we have everything, just to double check everything.
Oh, really brief, but Brian, I wanted to thank you for putting the, the performance together around the development. I appreciate seeing something like that, I know you must put a lot of work into it, but thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And in there, you know, I was at least able to get to the point of saying that the percentage average impact is like point zero zero two percent.
Yeah, as, in terms of how it affects, like the average households.
Yes, now, now that, that, even that could be taken and applied to, let's say, you get an appraisal value on a property, on all, on all the six Bs that Rob identifies, we could even take that and apply it to, at least have a kind of a basic dollar figure what that would be, and then add those up, that's, that's one way that you could do it.
Could you also look into Rob people, or whoever is requesting six Bs, do they then go for additional tax relief in the way of appealing taxes?
Going forward, when I have this in place, I could run analysis on the impact of each, each individual six B that comes forward, yes.
I think she wants to debate after they got this, in your view, do they apply for more rates in their taxes?
Yeah, I would have to look at tax appeals per, per individual, per entity, so I could follow up and see what they do there. Because they probably, most likely, they're all going to appeal their taxes.
That seems, that seems, that's a concern, that, I guess they can do it, but I just feel that, again, we're, we're spreading that burden out.
That does not necessarily mean that they'll, they'll receive anything, but they do have the right to appeal.
Yeah, I think some of them come in and they represent they're going to keep a certain market value, and I think, at least in our discussions before, it's kind of us diligently making sure they don't try to appeal below the market value they promised us they're going to be at, which we can, it's right there. Just us following up on everything.
Anybody on this side?
I have a quick comment concerning the Zuline. It seems like it's taking forever for that project to get started. I thought that the business should have been out a while ago, and I'm sure they're ready to start. Do we have a, I don't know if I mean you, but it's been talked about for a long time. I know people that are very frustrated with the potholes, you know, and their residents are just killing their cars. Zuline, and, you know, I keep getting phone calls, what are you guys, you promise, you promise, what are you doing? When can I tell we're going to start in or finish by?
If, if things go as expected with the bid opening, and I'm able to bring a favorable recommendation to you to the next meeting, I usually give about a month just to get contracts executed, insurance bonds, everything in place. So that would put us in mid to late May, and then just the unpredictability, I think confidently we could say end of May, early June, construction will start out there. All the folks with properties and businesses along there will be in contact directly with them when we actually have the construction schedule. We'll get letters out, we'll make sure that they have points of contact with our field staff, because it is, it's kind of tight quarters, and we really get to sure everybody's still. So everybody on the street there will hear from my construction staff. I try to hold those letters until we actually have a schedule in place, just because I don't, I don't want to speculate too much, but early June, I would expect that.
So they call like, sometimes June, you visit from Village, it's June after start.
And, and of course, everything's ensuring that the bids come in, all sorts of costs. We were asked to put out signs informing the residents about that project, and they have installed that as of Monday, so we'll put signs out there informing that construction is coming shortly.
That's what they keep hearing, it's coming. So, so it's Christmas, but. So, so it's Christmas, but no. And I indicated for frustration.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And it is a complicated project. That's the thing that took a lot of the engineering. Now, that doesn't necessarily excuse maybe the number of months that it took, but it is a fact. And it has to be done correctly, and it's a tight place to get it done right. So, we want to do it right.
All right, we're going to go a little bit out of order. We're going to go to the community development. So, we have a committee reports consideration and action, so we're going to go to the community development. Chairman Gersinski.
Madam President, fellow board members, I have an informational item under my report that later in the agenda, there will be a resolution supporting a six B real estate tax assessment application for the former hostess properties at 9555 and 9655 West Soaring Avenue for Bridge Development. In the resolutions, it's listed as two separate items, but it is one project. And that resolution is coming forward. And that completes my report.
Is there any objection if we go to the resolutions now? All right, so we have a resolution supporting a class six B real estate tax assessment application by Bridge Industrial Acquisition LLC for a business located at 9555 West Soaring Ave., Village of Schiller Park, Cook County, Illinois, Bridge Industrial Acquisition LLC. Do I have a motion to approve that resolution? You want to do it as one resolution? Okay. And then we have a resolution supporting a class six B real estate tax assessment application by Bridge Industrial Acquisition LLC for a business located at 9655 West Soaring Ave., Village of Schiller Park, Cook County, Illinois, Bridge Industrial Acquisition LLC.
Move to a dub.
Second.
A motion by trustee Disacki, a second by trustee Diaz. Call the roll, please.
So, this is one, this is going to be one resolution?
One move, yes.
Okay, and one number.
Correct.
Trustee Diaz?
Yes. Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Disacki?
Yes.
Lima?
No.
And Gersinski?
Yes. Okay. Motion passes. Resolution number?
It would be zero eight one six.
Thank you very much for letting us, thank you, sir. Okay, I want to go back to public safety. Chairman Diaz.
Madam President, fellow board members, I have no report on public safety at all.
Thank you. Recreation, Chairman Klug.
Madam President, fellow board members, I have two items to mention. I make a motion to approve the purchase of outdoor fitness equipment for Solica Park per the Recreation Board's proposal processed from the Krenz River Recreation Company in amount not to exceed $16,000.
Second.
A motion by trustee Klug, a second by trustee Diaz. Call the roll.
Diaz?
Yes.
Klug?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Disacki?
Yes.
Lima?
Yes.
Gersinski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
A meeting will convene on any of the dates that the, the, Rick, meeting can apply to. April 19th, 20th, 25th, those are the three dates I submitted to Brad. And hopefully we can all get our release dates to address the issue of the pace plus and shorten the perk.
And I think that trustee Klug, Disacki, and who is the other? And two of them did, did say either any of those dates are important, so. You got two out of the three so far, Chairman Klug.
Well, I'm, I'm dealing with, so.
That's right. Yes.
Madam President, fellow board members, that concludes my report.
Thank you. License Committee Chairman Fritz.
Madam President, fellow board members, I have basically a report from this evening's License Committee, which was held at 6:00 PM this evening in regards to a request for a Class A liquor license for K. Polotensky Tinska. It means for Pilatonska.
Okay.
Lollipop Incorporated at 9823 West, it's wrong, it should say Lawrence Ave. That's a minor detail. Anyway, we would like to report that the committee did not really come to any conclusion as we were moving it forward before the board. We still have questions regarding what it is that we are intending to do. And it's also some concern about what they're doing with the property, although that has nothing to do at this point with the giving of a liquor license. They were informed that liquor license is a privilege, not a right, and that they would be looking into it further before it was decided one way or the other by the committee as to whether we wanted to move it forward or not. They did state that they were not interested in gaming. But at present time, if we give them the Class A license, they are able to apply to the state. So, there's some consideration going to be had by that License Committee to look into some type of ordinance that would give us more control over whether or not, after we gave a liquor license, a pouring license, as to whether or not we would also have to okay moving forward with gaming for that facility. The other issue on the committee was the passive training. The police, the new police chief was at the meeting, and Officer Klug was also there. There was a sting that was brought forth by, I believe, the state and in cooperation with our police force. There were fifteen locations within the village, not just bars, but any place that sold liquor. They did a sting with a young fellow that was eighteen years old, and seven of the fifteen failed. So, there were fines that were put out. And in regards to that outcome, I think the License Committee has to look more closely at what we want to do with passive training. I, I know, I guess originally we decided when we discussed it that we weren't going to do anything with locations that were just selling packaged goods. But it appears that because a couple of gas stations and other packaged goods places also were part of this sting, I think we're going to have to address, address that. Currently, it's a county ordinance regarding the passive training, but I think it would be a preventative thing if we move forward with something that each business would be required to make sure that employees were trained. And Frank Abel is going to give us some better information, although we did get a handout from Officer Klug with some ordinances, so you wouldn't need to do that. That's all I have for this week.
Okay, thank you. Public Works, Chairman Disacki.
We have four items tonight, and this is where I get to the first item. Brad, I'm going to ask if you could give me a little more meat to that one, because it really just says all right Department of Transportation agreement.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, and Patrick could help me too. That, that's the standard agreement with Department of Transportation, so that we have the okay to be doing all the work and engineering and all that. It's really their, partly it's their right of way, but we can elaborate further, Patrick.
Right, so a couple things of clarification, the, the two agreements we have. The first is a local agency agreement. That's an agreement between the village and IDOT for the reimbursement for the engineering services for the proposed signal at Irving and Old River. And then the second agreement is the agreement between the village and my firm for those engineering services. We brought this to the board, maybe it was probably a month ago, where we just needed the resolution of that intent, so that we could get the state to review those contracts. So, now the state's reviewed it. They had a couple of minor edits to it, and we're bringing them back now for execution.
I make a motion to accept the proposed agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation.
That's later, isn't it?
No, it's, it's out now.
Okay.
And you know, and trustee, you might want to, you might want to just add to that to the, to the record, to the clerk can have in the record. You could, you could possibly add on a Department of Transportation related to the grant fund intersection improvement project for Irving Park Road and Old River Road.
Okay, so, so be it.
To clarify, because you're right, it is a grant, open-ended.
Thank you, Brad.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Disacki, second by trustee Diaz. Call the roll.
Diaz?
Yes.
Klug?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Disacki?
Yes.
Lima?
Yes.
Gersinski?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Second item I have is, is a motion to accept the proposed agreement with Gualt Hamilton Associate Engineering related to the grant-funded intersection improvement project for Irving Park Road and Old River Road.
Second.
A motion by trustee Disacki, second by trustee Fritz. Call the roll.
Diaz?
Yes.
Klug?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Disacki?
Yes.
Lima?
Yes.
Gersinski?
Yes.
A motion passes.
Next item I have is a motion to authorize a one-year service agreement extension for the 2016 sidewalk and water main replacement project with Schroder and Schroder Contractors in the amount not to exceed $60,000 for sidewalk and $15,000 for water mains.
Second.
A motion by trustee Disacki, second by trustee Gersinski. Call the roll.
Diaz?
Yes.
Klug?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Disacki?
Yes.
Lima?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
A motion passes.
The next item I have is a motion to approve the purchase of a replacement heating unit for the Public Works Garage for a quotation process from Hill Mechanical Services in an amount not to exceed $6,000.
Second.
A motion by trustee Disacki, second by trustee Lima. Call the roll.
Diaz?
Yes.
Klug?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Disacki?
Yes.
Lima?
Yes.
Gersinski?
Yes.
A motion passes.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Administration and Finance, Chairman Lima.
Madam President, fellow board members, I have three items. First item, I move to approve the current list of bills in the amount of $681,753.20.
Second.
A motion by trustee Lima, second by trustee Diaz. Call the roll.
Diaz?
Yes.
Klug?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Disacki?
Yes.
Lima?
Yes.
Gersinski?
Yes.
A motion passes.
Second item, I move to ratify the donation of $5,000 to Line Family Services, which was authorized on March 17th, 2016.
Second.
A motion by trustee Lima, second by trustee Fritz. Call the roll.
Diaz?
Yes.
Klug?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Disacki?
Yes.
Lima?
Yes.
Gersinski?
Yes.
A motion passes.
Finally, I would just like everyone to know that the committee will be meeting on April 13th, 2016, at 6:00 PM to discuss the healthcare proposals and several other items that are listed on our committee. Concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Development, Chairman Gersinski. Okay, that's right. Sorry, we did you first. I apologize. Okay, report for the mayor of consideration and action. We do have another appointment for the, a part-time paramedic, Joshua Boyer. So, could I have a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion by trustee Klug, second by trustee Fritz. Call the roll, please.
Diaz?
Yes.
Klug?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Disacki?
Yes.
Lima?
Yes.
Gersinski?
Yes.
A motion passes. Okay, other matters. We have an ordinance amending Section 71.52, scheduling of fines penalties of the new Millennium Code of the Village of Schiller Park, Cook County, Illinois. A motion to approve that.
So. Mayor, could I ask just a further clarification on what that's about?
Okay.
Are these, is this series connected?
Yes.
So, please, go ahead.
They could be, you could actually, you know, offer a motion for all three. Frank can.
You could chat about all three together, really.
Yeah, the, the long and short of it is that we started this process at the last meeting of adjusting our ordinances to match our current adjudication fees. That was brought to my attention by now-chief Tom Pergakis and Terry Roth and Patty. And so, once we passed those two, they reviewed them. There was another number I was unaware of, so one of them came back from last meeting to this meeting. And then there were two other ordinance sections in our code that they said needed to be brought up to date as well. So, once you pass these three, everything will be reflected in what it should be at the adjudicated level.
Can we wrap up all three?
Yeah, we'll just have three second ordinance numbers, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll second.
Okay. Well, I'm going to read the other two then, so we have it clarified. An ordinance amending Section 71.99, penalty of the new Millennium Code of the Village of Schiller Park, Cook County, Illinois. And an ordinance amending Section 70.999, penalty of the new Millennium Code of the Village of Schiller Park, Cook County, Illinois. So, a motion by trustee Klug, and a second by trustee Disacki. Call the roll, please.
Diaz?
Yes.
Klug?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Disacki?
Yes.
Lima?
Yes.
Gersinski?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Name of the ordinance numbers, please.
Okay. For the one, Section 71.52, the number would be 16-3042. The next one, which is Section 71.99, that number would be 16.3043. And for the third one, Section 70.999, that ordinance number would be 16-3044.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have an ordinance adopting the annual budget fiscal year 2016, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Could I make the recommendation we move that to the next meeting?
Motion to table.
I make a motion to table.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion to table budget by trustee Disacki, a second by trustee Diaz. Call the roll.
Diaz?
Yes.
Klug?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Disacki?
Yes.
Lima?
Present.
Gersinski?
Yes.
Okay, that's tabled. Okay, any citizens wishing to be heard at this time?
My name is Cordage Baum. Just a quick question about the sidewalk issue. This year, can we make a, could the guy actually get out of the car and actually look at the sidewalks? And be more picky about which sidewalks we replaced? Since last year, we replaced a sidewalk in my area on Bell Plain. Coming from the alley, Rose Street, which was the current alley, going towards Wagner, going toward Lincoln School, we replaced almost a whole block of sidewalk. Who walks from the alley to the school, Rose Street?
So, do you want to address that, or?
Which sidewalk are you referring to?
Well, you know Nick Skyler, so his building. That whole, we replaced his whole sidewalk almost. In both sides of the street, actually.
Okay.
And there was nothing wrong with the sidewalk, besides that it dipped. But then, if you walk down Prairie Avenue, it goes like a bridge in front of a house across this, well, two doors down from me, across the street.
All right, I can't talk about what happened last year, because I had nothing to do with that project, but ongoing, I know your section town is scheduled on the following year to go through your section town and go through all the problem sidewalks, but I will be happy to look at it and see if it's a non-need basis, and if it has been included in this project.
Okay, thank you. I just find it important, because we do have a bus stop in the school zone there.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. Anyone else at this time? Okay.
Mayor? Mayor? I'd like to ask a question if at all possible.
You know, Fritz brought up. You know, Fritz brought up something about a sting operation. Is that what you said? I didn't hear you clearly. Wake up, Mr. Fritz. Is that true? Sting operation?
There was.
There was? Okay, then it reverses back to the question I have. Did we ever follow up on the murders at this bar here on Irving Park? I forgot what they call that place. Horseshoe. Did we ever find out who? I mean, there was, was there ever an investigation to find out who killed these people?
I'm sure there was, but the police chief isn't here right now, Irene, so I'm sure we can ask him that question. I'm sure there was, though.
Okay, because I understand, somebody just told me the other day that they didn't find another body for two days, and I thought that was peculiar. So, yeah, I'd like to know what happened. I don't live too far away. So if we're going to have a sting operation, I think we should do an investigation into these murders, too. I mean, it's never too late, unless the statute of limitations is over. And I could find that out tomorrow, when I go downtown. I don't, well, we have an attorney outside.
It's never over.
Never? Wonderful, thank you.